Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting for Monday, November fifteenth. I will ask the city clerk to call roll please.
President?
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yedan Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Thank you. We had a closed session on November ninth. I will invite the city attorney to report out.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, staff, members of the community. No reportable action was taken in closed session at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you're new to watching a council meeting, you're seeing lots of faces on the screen. We do that on purpose. It's to recognize and to thank the staff that work every single day on behalf of our community to keep our city running so smoothly and a fantastic place to live and work. So thank you all to staff. Yesterday, if you've been following this city Instagram or Facebook, you know that yesterday was the first day of United Against Hate Week. And we spoke about it at our previous November meeting. There's several special events going on for our residents to learn together and connect around this important initiative. We all know that working with kindness and respect together will enable us to be the kind of city that we are and that we want to be. November is also Native American Heritage Month, and we'll talk more about that later in the meeting. And one of the United Against Hate events is a panel with Indigenous leaders and advocates. I'll ask the city clerk to put a link to all these events in the chat. These are local events. I mean, they're happening throughout California, but these are all local. In addition, tonight at seven thirty, so it's an interesting meeting because you might have seen if you've looked on the agenda, we have the conversation around district elections. The way the parameters are around it is that we need to have, start that discussion as close as possible to a time certain. That time is seven thirty. So there might be some readjusting to the agenda so we can hit that seven thirty timeline. And it really is so that we can enhance and ensure that the public is present and ready to give input at that time. So stay tuned. We'll see how it unfolds. Before we get to that, I would like to include a land acknowledgement that honors the original Indigenous people who have lived and live today in San Rafael. This city is traditionally home to the Coast Mewak people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land. So with that, I will now turn it to the city clerk, and she can let people know how they can participate in tonight's meeting, which is going to be a lot of fun and interesting things.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I'd like to ask staff to turn their cameras off. Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish Zoom channel. Now to the completion of Agenda Item seven A. You can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in Zoom toolbar. It looks like the globe. And we have posted a link to the Zoom meeting in the description for the video on YouTube. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And at this time, I'd like to invite our interpreter to provide my comments in Spanish.
Antes de comenzar, quisiéramos anunciar que la reunión del Consejo Municipal de esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea en español, proporcionado por interpretes cualificados en el canal de Zoom en español desde ahora hasta completar el punto de agenda siete A. Puede integrarse al canal de español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación en la parte de abajo de su pantalla donde se ve un globito. Y hemos publicado un enlace a la reunión de Zoom en la descripción para el video en YouTube. Como recordatorio, le pedimos que todos participando esta noche hablen despacio para permitir que nuestros interpretes expresen sus comentarios efectivamente. Gracias.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide public comments by telephone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and use the meeting ID eight nine nine two six three five nine eight eight five pound. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand button to let us know you'd like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience technical difficulties, please email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Closed captioning is available for this meeting, and the link is published to YouTube and is included in the Zoom chat now. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to Marina, who is starting out with the interpretation. And we will be switching out interpreters at every hour, so there will be that part of this evening as well. So the first item on our agenda is open time for public expression. That's anything not on tonight's agenda that you would like to share with the council or the community. City clerk?
Thank you. Now, thank you for the public comment timer. I will just state that each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then they will be muted once time has elapsed. And then, once again, a reminder to please speak slowly. And I do see a hand raised.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jason Saris. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, Jason. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm great. I just want to talk about the camp, safe area camp site you have underneath the freeway. And I was wondering if there's any way you guys can get a gas barbecue there because, you know, it's the safest place of being under the freeway. It's safer than anybody who has a barbecue on their deck. People would be able to eat warm food if they can't afford to eat out. The other two camps in Marin allow it. I think this is an easy fix. And I also, I seriously question if the city has a right to deny donations, donations to people living outside. If the city is not clothing or feeding the camp, then why can't people who want to provide direct mutual aid donate to the camp? Without letting people exercise their right to freedom of association, then the city is infringing upon people's constitutional rights. It's something that we're going to be looking into on our end. The last thing I want to talk about is fire exits, fire escape. There is only one entrance and exit in the whole camp. There aren't any fire escapes in the camp whatsoever. This is something that needs to change immediately, I think. I'm surprised that the fire department signed off on the camp with only one entrance and one exit. I will be calling the fire department as to the reason why the camp was signed off. These are easy things that I think could fix, that you could fix, and it would be, it'd make, it'd give people a little more sense of their own worth. And, you know, it's something that I think is easy for you guys to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, for those comments, and I know that staff is paying attention, and we'll definitely look into that. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. This is Ava Crissanti. I'm actually much more concerned about that location than Mr. Saris is. I've been warning San Rafael that that location violates the rights of what are essentially internees in the area for, since July. I mean, you've had people living under an excessive amount of freeway noise for over four months now. I was there on Wednesday. There was no guard. There were no signs saying do not enter, so I entered, and I was absolutely shocked when I went inside. It seems like what you've been hiding is that this encampment contains more Black and Latino campers than any other encampment in Marin County, and yet it has absolutely the most human rights violating conditions. And I want to point out that there have been multiple cases where, you know, involving Guantanamo, where excessive noise was listed as torture, and this went before military tribunals, et cetera. And it is completely inhumane to force people to stay under that incredibly noisy freeway with four major intersections on all sides. You're in violation of Geneva Conventions because there are no amenities such as toilets. There is no electricity. There, if people want to use a working toilet, they have to cross, you know, a major intersection to get away from the camp. You know, there's, people aren't permitted so much as an electric tea kettle. There are meals occasionally provided. It's very haphazard. This should, there should have been a different site for this immediately.
Thank you for your comments.
I see no other hands raised, but I'll give everyone a few seconds.
Okay.
I see no further public comment.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the city manager for the city manager reports. City manager Schutz.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and city council. I'm going to be brief for this report in an effort to keep us moving for our time certain public hearing that's coming up at seven thirty. I just wanted to bring up two quick things. First, we do send out a regular e-newsletter update on the service support area. And in last week's edition, it announced a clothes and cards donation drive. So it's an opportunity for, for our community to donate items to individuals experiencing homelessness at the service support area. Started today, runs through the end of this calendar year, and we're specifically looking for gloves, hats, new long underwear and packages, and food gift cards that can be dropped off at the police department, the gift cards at the police department, and then all of the other items could be dropped off at City Hall, the police public safety center, fire, any fire stations, or the Chamber of Commerce. And I know this is the time of year where there's lots of nonprofits and organizations looking for support and donations. So we encourage anyone in the community that's able to, to donate. But we just wanted to also offer this as a, as an option as well. There's lots of great causes out there, so we don't want to stop anyone from going to the places that you typically support, but just wanted to add the service support area as well. And then, lastly, the lighted boat parade is taking place this year. It's on Sunday, December twelfth. And boats converge at five thirty PM, and the parades at six, rain or shine. It begins on the east end of the San Rafael Canal, and Mission City will lead the parade along the canal to the Turning Basin, back to Montecito Shopping Center, and then back to the start again. So there's all sorts of great viewing places for everyone in, in public areas to be viewing the, the lighted boat parade. Thank you, Mayor Kate and city council. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Are there any public comments? Actually, members of the public like to comment on the city manager's report.
If you'd like to provide public comments, please press star nine if you're calling in, or through Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. I see no hands raised.
Thank you. I'll close it, bring it back to the council member reports. We want to hear what you have to, but in the spirit of keeping things moving, short and sweet would be desired. So I will start with Vice Mayor Bushy. Go ahead.
Here comes short and sweet. I attended a meeting of the Central Insantitation Agency Board. We approved the annual audit and are proceeding with considering issuing bonds to fund some of our unfunded pension liabilities. Also, I attended a meeting of a Locklom and Development Oversight Committee. And finally, I attended a meeting of the MCC MC Water Committee last week. Thank you.
Thank you, of which I think you're one of the co-chairs, correct?
I am.
Okay. Thank you for stepping up again. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I will be brief. Two things to report. I attended the priority setting committee meeting last Thursday. Actually, it was not last Thursday. It was two Thursdays ago, November fourth. County staff presented data as requested by the committee, not least of which were racial subgroups throughout Marin and the different communities. I thought that was fascinating. This is available for public review on the county website. The twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four funding cycle priorities were established. We selected four. Basic health services, child, youth, and parent support services, food security, and housing support services. The other item I wanted to report out on is that I attended the opening of the Marin History Museum at the Boyd House. It was the Great Heights exhibit, aerial black and white photographs of Marin in the fifties and sixties, well before it's developed as it is today. So please check your calendars, public, if you want to attend. Boyd House is open for the Marin History Museum. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know I saw the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Kurtz there. I don't know if Councilmember Micah might have been there as well. It's open from two to four, and it's open for everyone. So thank you for reminding everyone about the History Museum. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kate. Try to go slow and fast at the same time.
Good point. Speak slowly but go so right, right?
Exactly. Speaking slowly but fast. So I attended the Canal Policy Working Group last week. And also, I visited the Kaiser Permanente New Medical Center that I actually haven't seen before. And that was actually wonderful to see such a brand new. It doesn't feel like you're actually in a, you know, in a medical center. So it's really nice for the community. And I'll finish saying that I attended the Dia de los Muertos, or the Day of the Dead in the canal. It was so great to be there after last year was canceled and just being with the community. Huge, huge thank you to Multicultural Center, all the sponsors, and our department from Police, Fire, and Public Works. It was great to see our city manager there with his family, and also I saw Councilmember Kurtz. So it was a great day. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Alrighty, so a member of you already mentioned what I was participated in, so I won't repeat those. Just will reiterate, Not in Our Town this week, and a thank you to the staff for helping with that. I hope everyone has seen the new banners that are up. They're really nice. And it's just a great way, as well as all the businesses that have put up the signs, the, the Not in Our Town, Not in San Rafael, United Against Hate. They were, they're done in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, so please keep an eye out for those. I attended the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority meeting. The annual report is now posted on the new and improved website, so please take a chance to take a look at that. And also, there are two openings for the Citizens Oversight Committee. I believe one is in Corder Madara, but I think there's also an Out Large position, so please take a look at that as well. And I attended the first five race counts forum, and those, the data will be updated. I just looked right now. It'll be updated, I believe, this week, but it's really, really important information. It was, I mean, we moved from one to two, which is not something to be that proud about, but I mean, it's, there's still a lot of work we need to do in Marin.
Thank you.
And that's about it.
Okay. Yeah, I think you were saying that we moved from the most disparate county in California to the second most disparate. So you're right, not something to brag about. Thank you. And then, the one thing I'll mention is the five of us met, we had a city council retreat. As, as you know, if you come to attend meetings, this is a newer, three new members to our team. So we wanted to ensure that we continue to be the highly functioning team we are. And in addition, we had the city manager evaluation that we do that will be brought forward in, in, in a couple of months, I guess, once, once it's been written up. So with that, I will ask the city clerk if there's any comment on this, and we are moving right along. I'm really proud of everyone.
There is. I do see one hand raised, which is a reminder, if you do need to provide public comment, you'll do that by pressing star nine or using the raise hand feature. There is two minutes on the clock, so once time has elapsed, I will be muting.
Thanks, Ava Crissanti. I just wanted to add to Councilmember Kurtz's comments regarding the race counts meeting. Many of us joined as members of the public that meeting, and we listened very patiently to various county functionaries. And we were not allowed to speak our questions aloud. It was very tightly controlled. The chat section where we were supposed to type our questions was very lively because the, the audience, which included, you know, many more people of color than the people who were presenting, was pretty, you know, to put it mildly, ticked off by the county's anti-democratic approach to taking questions. There were so many issues that needed to be raised in that meeting, and the county effectively told everyone that their, their comments and their voices, particularly the voices, it seemed very pointed, that the county did not want to hear voices that might be Black from Marin City. And that is, it, it was disappointing that Councilmember Kurtz didn't speak up for people in, in the chat room who, who were asking to be heard. It was a long meeting, and it was, it was, it was profoundly anti-democratic. It was, it was ironic because it was supposed to be, you know, about race counts, and it was basically silencing a lot of Black people from Marin City who had a lot of legitimate complaints that didn't make it into the question, period. And we see this sort of behavior repeated over and over again within the county. And it would be nice if Councilmember Kurtz, when she reports on items like this, on issues like this, if she were more complete in her report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold for comment?
Yes, this is Councilmember Hill. I'd like to hold item five D, please.
Thank you. That's been noted. Okay, not seeing any others. I will open up the public comment to the consent calendar items. We'll take comment on all items A through G, even though we will be pulling D for a separate vote.
I do see one hand raised.
Okay.
I could request the public timer, public comment timer.
Hi, this is Ida Lochte. Can you hear me?
We can't hear. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank the city council members for, again, declaring the intention to levy an annual assessment for the downtown San Rafael BID. You, the Economic Development Department, Danielle, and the entire city of San Rafael have been great partners and great supporters of our downtown and the BID. So thank you.
Thank you for commenting on item five C.
I see no other public comments, however, I'll give everyone a couple of seconds.
Okay, I will close the public comment and bring it back for a vote on five A through F minus D. Sounds like a math equation, but I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. A through F minus D.
Actually, should it be through, we're not doing G?
I'm sorry, did I say G? If you could rephrase the motion, please, Councilmember Kurtz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar, A through G, excluding D.
Thank you. Second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedan Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Now we'll turn to the Parks and Rec master plan. Councilmember Hill, maybe you can speak to why you wanted to have that held.
I really just want to call attention to what it is and its context in our community. This is a funded, this is funded by Measure A, and it will bring a, a Park and Rec Master Plan will bring to our community how we prioritize and how we consider funding for our public spaces. One of the major facets that I was very proud of in consideration of the selection of this award was around the ability to deliver equity and inclusion in consideration of how funds are expended. This was a major aspect of demonstrating ability to perform this work. So anyway, it is not a comment of, of being critical. This is a comment of support. So I just want to draw attention to this, and I'm looking forward to kicking off this process. And thank you to the Planning Commission, Director Garin, and Director Andrade Wax. And special thanks to April Miller for facilitating and making sure that all, all of us were heard as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see both the directors and maybe Director Andrade Wax. Do you just want to maybe say a line or two? I think Councilmember Hill did a great job encapsulating what it's about, but if you wanted to add anything, or you, Director Garin?
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Hill for his comments. We're very excited, both Director Garin and I, to start this process. It will be a wonderful planning document and tool for the next ten to twenty years for the city.
Fantastic. I think that's something everyone can get behind. Oh, yes, Director Garin.
Just very quickly, it's a much-needed document, and we're looking forward to having it. I think it's the first ever document that we've produced like this, and it really will help to identify the needs in, in our parks across the city. So we're excited to have it going forward.
I look forward to it. I can't tell you how many emails I've gotten over the year about wanting a skate park, and I kept saying, you know what? We're going to do a master plan to see if a skate park fits in. So, so there you go for all the skaters out there. So with that, we already took public comment on the entire consent calendar, so I would entertain.
Yes, this is Councilmember Hill. I'd like to hold item 5D, please.
Thank you. That's been noted. Okay, not seeing any others. I will open up the public comment to the consent calendar items. We'll take comment on all items A through G, even though we will be pulling D for a separate vote.
I do see one hand raised.
Okay.
I could request the public timer, public comment timer. Thank you.
Hi, this is Ida Lochte. Can you hear me?
We can't hear. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank the city council members for, again, declaring the intention to levy an annual assessment for the downtown San Rafael BID. You, the Economic Development Department, Danielle, and the entire city of San Rafael have been great partners and great supporters of our downtown and the BID. So, thank you.
Thank you for commenting on item 5C.
I see no other public comments, however, I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no further public comment.
Okay, I will close the public comment and bring it back for a vote on 5A through F minus D. Sounds like a math equation, but I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. A through F minus D.
Actually, should it be through, we're not doing G?
I'm sorry, did I say G? If you could rephrase the motion, please, Councilmember Kurtz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar, A through G, excluding D.
Thank you. Second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Ida Ansalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Now we'll turn to the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Councilmember Hill, maybe you can speak to why you wanted to have that held.
I really just want to call attention to what it is and its context in our community. This is a funded, this is funded by Measure A. And it will bring a, a Park and Rec Master Plan will bring to our community how we prioritize and how we consider funding for our public spaces. One of the major facets that I was very proud of in consideration of the selection of this award was around the ability to deliver equity and inclusion in consideration of how funds are expended. This was a major aspect of demonstrating ability to perform this work. So anyway, it is not a comment of, of being critical, this is a comment of support. So I just want to draw attention to this, and I'm looking forward to kicking off this process. And thank you to the Planning Commission, Director Garin and Director Andrade Wax. And special thanks to April Miller for facilitating and making sure that all of us were heard it well. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see both the directors and maybe Director Andrade Wax. Do you just want to maybe say a line or two? I think Councilmember Hill did a great job encapsulating what it's about. But if you wanted to add anything, or you, Director Garin.
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Hill for his comments. We're very excited, both Director Garin and I, to start this process. It will be a wonderful planning document and tool for the next 10 to 20 years for the city.
Fantastic. I think that's something everyone can get behind. Oh, yes, Director Garin.
Just very quickly, it's a much needed document, and we're looking forward to having it. I think it's the first ever document that we've produced like this. And it really will help to identify the needs in, in our parks across the city. So we're excited to have it going forward.
I look forward to it. I can't tell you how many emails I've gotten over the year about wanting a skate park. And I kept saying, you know what, we're going to do a master plan to see if a skate park fits in. So, so there you go for all the skaters out there. So with that, we already took public comment on the entire consent calendar, so I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Hill, would you like to do that?
Yes, I'd like a move that we approve the, I'm not sure if you can read this exactly. Do I have to read the whole thing, or can I just say 5D?
Wait. City Clerk?
Yes, please. The resolution, please.
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Royston, Hanamoto, Alley and Abbey, RHAA, to assist with development of San Rafael's Park and Recreation Master Plan in the amount of $2,005,200, sorry, $259,238, and authorizing contingency funds in the amount of $25,762 for a total amount of $2,085,000. Goodness.
Thank you. We'll, we'll let Marina catch up on that one, because you said that very fast. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Ida Ansalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0, and I echo the thanks that Councilmember Hill gave already to Director Andrade Wax and Director Garin's. Great project. Okay, we have a few minutes, so I'd like to go ahead. I think the city clerk is okay with this. We'll do a special presentation regarding Native American Heritage Month. We had talked about this at our previous meeting. And I'm pretty sure that Carmen Valdez is going to come on and talk about some of the great activities. Let's see, oh, there she is. You didn't know we'd get to you before 7:30. So I will turn the floor over to you. Wait, unmute first. Wait, unmute first.
All right, can you hear me now? Yes. Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the city council. Carmen Valdez, interim HR Director, doing a very brief presentation on the Native American Heritage. As Mayor Kate already stated, it is important to recognize that Marin County is located on the ancestral homeland of the Coast Miwok community, and that the Coast Miwok still live here while continuing to practice and share traditions among their tribal communities. Native American history goes back to the 1900s, when Arthur C. Parker, a Seneca Indian, was one of the first proponents of declaring an American Indian Day. He convinced the Boy Scouts to set aside a day of celebration for the first Americans. Because of his hard work and dedication, this was successfully celebrated for three years. It wasn't until 1915, when the Annual Congress of the American Indian Association approved a plan to formally dedicate an American Indian Day. And it was at this time that there was this first formal appeal for recognition of Native Indians as American citizens. And a proclamation was declared that the second Saturday of May be a day to celebrate American Indian Day. However, because of the poor records and lack of proper documentation, the proclamation was never adopted. In 1990, when President H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November, that's how we got to November, as National American Indian Month. And because of this, it is important as a society to remember to pay tribute to the rich ancestry of Native Americans, to recognize their significant contributions, and to allow tribal sovereignty and to show respect and understanding of their treaty rights. It is also important during this month that we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, and acknowledge the important contributions of native people, which we recognize proudly woven into the history of this country. With that, I will turn it over to Susan Andrade Wax, our Library and Recreation Director, who will share some additional resources.
Good evening, everyone. As Carmen mentioned, the city of San Rafael and most of Marin County occupy traditional Coast Miwok land. And the Bay Area has always been home to many more indigenous populations. If you're curious about other territories in North America and around the world, Native land is a great map tool for exploring North America's native cultures and languages. In addition, the Native American Heritage Month website has plenty of resources, online exhibits and virtual events planned for this year, so be sure to check them out. If you're curious and looking for some new reads, check out our book list focused on indigenous culture and history. All of these resources can be accessed through the San Rafael Public Library's website, which is www.srpubliclibrary.org. Again, that's www.srpubliclibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe the city clerk can put that in the chat later. And thank you, Carmen, for your beautiful words. That was fantastic. Okay, so I will open this up to public comment, and then we will get to the public hearing. So, city clerk.
Thank you. If you'd like to provide public comments, please press star nine or use the raise hand feature. I see no hands raised. I see no further, no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. And again, we'll have dropped a link in the chat. You can find any of this too by going to the city website and just putting it in the search bar. So thank you for those recognitions. And with that, we, it's 7:32. I'm really impressed with this group and our community to get to the public hearing. As I mentioned, it's important that we have a date certain. I see we've been joined. And before I turn it over, and I think this will be spoken to on the redistricting process, we're looking at this in San Rafael, but if you read the newspaper on a regular basis, you know it's happening at the federal level. There's congressional redistricting and the county level redistricting. And I think that will be spoken to in addition, but I really wanted to provide that context because it can be a little confusing. A lot of agencies doing this. So with that, it looks like I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
If I, Mayor Kate.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Pardon me, may I first talk to our interpreters before the presentation starts?
Excellent idea. Okay. Then we'll turn it to the city attorney.
We're ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marina. And now thank you, Paloma is helping us out. Okay. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I would like to reintroduce Chris Scannell, our outside counsel from the Nielsen Marksmen Firm, who's assisting us with the redistricting process. Chris assisted us the first time around, and we're very grateful to have his help again this time. Chris?
Thank you, Rob. And thank you, Council, for having me back. It's nice to be back with you. And as, as Mayor Kate said, this has been a busy time for redistricting. All of us are working around the clock on lots of these. I, you may know, I'm also working with Marin County. And obviously, the State Redistricting Commission is running towards its deadline at the end of the year. So there's a lot of this going on all over the place. When I was last with you back in September, if you'll recall, yeah, we had some, some discussion about sort of the general rules of the process, you know, the timeline, and some preliminary numbers with respect to the population figures for the current districts. But at the time, we were still waiting, even then, for the final, final redistricting data to be released by the state. And the Census Bureau had put out its preliminary numbers. But under state law, now those have to be adjusted by the California statewide database, and those still weren't available. And so part of our, our purpose this evening is to talk with you and give you that, those final numbers and sort of where things stand, was our, was our starting point. And then we're going to want to talk a little bit about where we go from there. And in particular, we'll be looking for feedback from you and from the public on communities of interest, which we talked about before. You know, what, what sorts of things we should be taking into account and drawing those lines. And, you know, obviously, I recognize that these lines are not that old. And we did a lot of this work a couple of years ago. And so, you know, it may be that, that there won't be a whole lot of new ground to till. But, you know, that, that is, you know, getting that sort of feedback on the current lines and what changes would be appropriate, to the extent they need to be made, is something we'll be, want to be hearing from you. But in the meantime, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Rob McIntyre, who's with National Demographics Corporation. They're the demographers that worked with us last time, and they're, they're doing the process again this time. The technical, the brains behind the operation, if you will. So I'm going to turn it over to Robert and let him give you the rundown.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome, Robert. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and staff. It's truly been an honor to work with you and your team. I'm going to share my presentation screen here, so we can see and talk about the same thing. So tonight is the first public hearing in the redistricting process. And, and really, the first public hearing in the redistricting process is about informing the community on, on the tenants of redistricting, so they can engage. Because you as elected, who have gone through this once already, really already understand the process quite well. You may find some, some new pieces under the Fair Maps Act, but, but as elected, you really get this. But the people who live their day-to-day lives, this is, this is all new language and vocabulary for them. And so this is, this first public hearing is really about engaging the community, building that vocabulary, so they can give you good, solid feedback. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and go to the next slide. So a, as you know, you, you previously moved to by district elections back in 2018. And so you, you received a demand, a demand letter and went through the process and adopted a map, a district map, April 16th of 2018, and that was in place for the November election. So Districts 1 and District 4 have members in those, those districts, while the other members remain at large until the 2022 election. And so that, that's one of the, you're in that weird limbo period where you've got some trustees that are at large, or councils, council members at large, and some that are in their districts already. And so with this process, we're redrawing the lines using the 2020 census data. But since you have gone through the process, it's important to recognize what our starting point is. So here we have the map that was adopted in 2018. You can see the four council districts, because you elect your mayor at large. And so you can see the division that was brought up at the time, and there, there's a lot of input, input by the public and by the council, back when this map was originally drawn and selected. And so this is the map that is currently in place, that we're, that we can use kind of as our starting point. Now, there have been some changes since that map was adopted in 2018. And the, the principal change is, is the California Fair Maps Act of 2019. And it introduced some procedural requirements that, that weren't necessarily in the last iteration of this process. Previously, we did have to conduct four public hearings, like we do now. But before they, for redistricting, they all, two public meetings had to be before we even talked about a map. And then had, two had to be post-map. You could have more on either or both sides of the process, but this, this set the minimum standard. The language also says that if, if requested, you have to provide interpreters for the process. And I see that Paloma is there providing service, and that, that's wonderful news. That, that's great that you're on top of that. And then, of course, the law requires that you have an outreach media campaign to community groups to, to reach out, and especially to those underrepresented, underrepresented groups. Because the California Voting Rights Act is all about empowering historically marginalized groups. And so by reaching out to those underrepresented communities, especially those non-English speaking communities, you're really meeting that need. And then, of course, establishing a website that you have to maintain for 10 years, so that way people can see the record of what has transpired between now and the next centennial. The schedule has been laid out for this process. And it's really important to recognize the schedule for the process, because while these meetings seem kind of far apart, a lot happens in between these meetings. And so you can see, as Mr. Scannell talked about, the state released, or the Fed's released a census data back in August. But what they released to the state was a bit of a mess, and the state did their work. And, 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 for example, the citizen voting age population, there were 59 territories where the citizen voting age Latino counts were more than the total population count in, in certain districts. So all of that citizen voting age population had to be cleaned up. And we didn't really have good data until the end of September, minus the prison data. And so really, you, you are not what I would call behind the curve on this one. You, you've managed to schedule all of your meetings just about as quick as you could, given the release of, of data. And so you see November 15th, tonight is public hearing one. You'll come back the middle of January, in the middle of February, in the middle of March for your meetings. And so, you know, the goal tonight is, is to really lay that foundation for meetings two, three and four as we move forward. And of course, you have to adopt your map by April 17th, 2022, because it needs to be in place for the November 8th, 2022 election. Now, we're, we're asking, we're going to ask people for input, and they're going to have the ability to draw maps and submit them if they so choose. And so here's the important part that those community members need to pay attention to. First and foremost, you have to comply with federal law. And so when we talk about complying with federal law, if you're drawing your own map, really, it's that first bullet you want to look at, is ensure roughly equal population. Now, of course, we can't get it down to equal population to the exact person, because in your district, you have an odd number of people, I think, as we're going to see. And so with that in mind, recognizing they can be a small deviation, but from the highest overpopulated district to the lowest underpopulated district, that variance can't exceed 10%. And so as long as you're less than that 10% variance, you're considered balanced under the federal law. There are some tenants of the Federal Voting Rights Act that are, that are included in the maps we draw. And when we, when we, we process maps submitted, we process them to see if they, to ensure they meet those requirements. But really, what's important for somebody who's going to use your map drawing tool locally, besides the equal population, is really making sure they're not, that they're avoiding racial gerrymandering. And so that they're not trying to pack or crack. So meaning overpopulate, or, or, for example, if you could have one ethnic group who could very easily have good voting power in two districts, you don't want to put them all into one district, which is called packing them. You also don't want to spread them out among all four districts, diluting their voting strength. And so you're kind of balancing that, you're avoiding the racial gerrymandering around that. After the federal voting acts, federal voting laws, you have the California law. And, and these actually is where we get into a lot of the conversation that we're hoping for public input tonight. We want to ensure when we draw district boundaries that they're geographically contiguous. So what I can't do is, is break a district into two to grab one population and pull it down into another. We wanted, we wanted, to the extent we can, while still balancing that population, we want to minimize the divisions of neighborhoods and communities of interest. And so tonight, we want to hear from your community about what are neighborhoods and communities of interest. I'm going to define those so people can give us feedback. We want to try to draw districts that are compact. When I think of what the most compact district looks like, it's a, it's a circle. Of course, cities aren't shaped in neat places where we can draw, you know, four perfect circles. And, and so to the, we just aspire to draw compact districts. And then, of course, when we're doing that, we're not going past a nearby population to take a more distant population and capture it into a group. And we also do not favor discriminate against political parties. So I can tell you, the maps that NDC will draw will not pull the voting propensity of the voters. We will not be looking at that data. It will not be part of our data set when we draw our maps for you to consider. After the federal and California criteria, there's a traditional voting criteria. And, and these are things that, that often people want to keep in mind or may choose to keep in mind. One is we want to minimize the changes in election cycles. So if somebody is presently in a 2022 election cycle, we want to try not to move too many of those people into a 24 election cycle where they missed, essentially not voted for, for six years. So we want to try to avoid that. We also want to respect the will of the voters in the last election. The voters put you electeds in office, and they should decide if you stay or go, ideally not depend of the demographer. And so we want to keep that in mind as well. And then, of course, preserve the core of the existing districts, because you already have districts. So these are the criteria that we're balancing, and they go from most important on the left, least flexible on the left, to most flexible on the right. So one of the things we want to do is look at, when we take your existing 2018 map and we plug in the 2020 census numbers, is it a legally compliant map? And, and I have to say, your map is, and that has been a rare finding these days. I, I, most of the districts that were cities and water districts and so forth that I've been working with, their maps are no longer population balanced. Or they've had major changes where people live, different protected class voters within their boundaries. And, and so that, that's not the case for you. You see your population from, from the 2020 census is 61,333. That means each of your four districts should have roughly 15,333 people in them. These are people, not adults, not voters, total people of any age. And then, once we, once we say, okay, now we've got a, a legally population balanced map, let's look at some of the other factors. So are we, are we taking care of those protected class voters? And much like we did with the 2018 map, you can see District 1 has a majority of Latino voters in District 1. Now, when you look at a total 34% Latino population, citizen voting age population, I'm sorry, 30% total citizen voting age population for Latinx and Hispanic. it's not possible to draw majorities in two districts because you've got whatever across the rest of the city, you've got a relatively uniform population of Latinos. But in District one, you've got an ability for them to, the Latinos to, through a majority, to elect a person of their choosing. We also see that you've got a relatively low population of of African Americans and 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 a small but sizable population of Asian and Pacific Islanders within your community. And there you see they're pretty well evenly spread out because the numbers in Districts two, three, and two, three, and four are relatively close for each of those groups. And so really, the only group that we could draw a specific district for was Latinos in District one. And that happened to hold true for the old map, given the new census data. And so what I'm I'm not saying, pick this map as it is. I'm saying you could, the council could reselect this map. But you're going to get input from your community, and you're going to want to hear that and decide if there need to be any changes made based on the input that you receive. So here's where I talked about what the average size of a of a council district would be, given your total population. We talked about the mathematical formula for the deviation, looking at the largest populated district minus the lowest populated district. So in this case, District four minus District three gave us a difference of thirteen hundred and eight people. Well, if you divide that into the average size of a district of fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty three, we get eight and a half percent. And so that's below ten percent. So here's the part we need to hear from your community. We need to hear for them from them how they define their communities of interest. Now, a community of interest, we see the definition right here in the center of the page, is a population that shares a common social or economic interest that should be included within a single district for the purposes of its effective and fair representation. Now, this could mean anything. You could think of maybe a common interest around a park, or maybe we all drive across that same railroad track that's always got the arm down and the lights flashing every time we're driving home during rush hour. It could be virtually any one of these types of things that you think of that make that bring people together as communities of interest. So these are the kind of things we were hoping to hear. What communities of interest cannot be is based on political parties, incumbent electeds, or political candidates. And so that this is much less of a community issue than a political issue. So think of those issues that are driving life and quality of life in your neighborhood and how you how that might form groups. Some of the, some of the things we'd like to hear on are what 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 would you consider good geographical boundaries for your neighborhoods or communities of interest? I'm going to try to draw maps that that follow natural boundaries like major roadways, arteries, mountainsides, railroad tracks, obvious devisers. But you might have other ways that you would put different parts of your city together, recognizing we're going to be doing population balancing if we were to draw a different style of map. So what would that community of interest be? Should it be kept together in one district, or should it be in two? An example of two would be like a very large senior center. Because those very large senior centers are high propensity voters, and they tend to like to have two on the city council who have who they feel like have to be accountable to them. And they also tend to be a very large population in a very small area. And and so they can often be broken up into two. But other groups may want to be kept into one because they don't have the numbers where they can necessarily influence two regions. And so they may want to be that community of interest in one district. Now, Center of L has has put forth a couple mapping tools. They're they're offering the Draw Twenty Twenty and the Paper Mapping Kit. These will be available on the on the redistricting website and with instructions that show you how to work them. The paper kit is real simple. You just you're you know that that target is each district with fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty three roughly. And so you just start capturing population areas and adding up the numbers until you get really close to fifteen thousand three hundred. And you divide the city any way you like, but getting close to fifteen thousand in each district, fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty three. Now, the paper kits don't tell you all of that demographic data that's behind there. But if you do decide to use the Draw Twenty Twenty online tool, then when you do capture different areas together, it does give you the demographic data behind the choices you've made, recognizing that Latinos should at least be able to reach a majority in at least one council district. So if you're gonna if you're going to draw maps, recognize that that one group is going to need to reach a majority at a minimum to have a legally compliant map. So tonight, we're really, we want to make sure that you understand that the city has done a great job creating their redistricting webpage. And they've already got lots of lots of links and information available for you to follow along the process. And so here you see the website address for that redistricting webpage. And there's also links to share your thoughts. So many people don't like to come to council meetings and speak in public, even though it's online, because it's scary, and that's okay. And so if that's you, please feel free to contact and write your testimony through this page. You know, sometimes you may decide you want to take that paper mapping tool because it's really simple, and you just want to draw one area. You can do that. You don't have to send a legally compliant map in. All I ask is if you're going to draw any maps, whether it be one area or whole map, please write your rationale for the choices that were important to you when you drew your map. Because those notes are given to the city council, they're given to the demographer. And and they're they're, we try to incorporate as many of those as we can to give options to the council, or at least so they can so the council can consider those before they adopt a final map. So you believe it or not, that input is actually, it's transcribed, it's put into a package, and it is considered. So it's very very valuable, and it's worth your time. And so with that, I am available to answer questions before or after the public hearing.
Thank you so much, Rob. I think we'll start with questions, and and I really appreciate you laying it out. That was really clear, it's a lot of information, and we do want to get to the public. But any clarifying questions from my colleagues? But yes, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
So the first time we saw the data, there was more of a shit. There's it was definitely, it was a little bit different. So now it's balanced out. Is there going to be another update?
No.
Okay.
Not on the total population. There there might be major minor changes to the citizen voting age population, but not enough that it would change what we need to do with the Latino population or or, you know, as far as that one protected class being able to reach majority.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, Councilmember Hill.
I didn't have a question until I did.
Okay.
Will, thank you for your presentation. Will you be considering maps on a rolling basis or only more towards the end?
So typically, what we what we like to do is have all of the public submit their maps at least fourteen days before the third council meeting, before the third public hearing. That gives us NDC time not only to draw our maps, but to process all the public maps. Occasionally, we get a civics class or something like that where we get twenty or thirty maps submitted. We want to make sure we have time to honor each and every one of those because each one of them takes a significant time to process, put together, make notes, give you the demographic breakdowns for. And of course, if somebody spent the time making it, we want to make sure it makes it into the packet for you to talk about and consider. And and so we ask that those those publicly submitted maps be submitted at least fourteen days before the third public hearing.
And what was that date certain? Is that just I can note it?
January. January. Sorry about that. January, I'm sorry, February twenty first is the third public hearing. So we would be looking at February seventh as the public deadline. And I'll I'll work with the with staff to make sure that that's put on your redistricting webpage as well, so it's very clear.
Awesome.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Great thing for people to do over the holiday, to work on this. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, if you think of any, we will bring it back to the council after, and we're ready to hear from the community. So I will ask Madam City Clerk to help us with the public comment.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Please speak slowly to allow for our interpreters this evening. Would you have a hand raised?
Yeah, thanks, Eva Crisanti. I feel like I'm listening to a a discussion of how many angels can sit on the head of a pin. I mean, when you consider what the actual definition of gerrymandering is, it's it's creating an unfair advantage for a particular group based on redrawing a map. And I think one of the things that that, you know, seems pretty obvious is that Marin County's long history of racial covenants, redlining, et cetera, the thing that made us the most racially disparate county in the entire state of California in twenty seventeen means that gerrymandering has already been achieved. And, you know, all of this discussion about what we're going to do with particular, you know, neighborhoods or districts within the the city of San Rafael, you know, long after the fact that you created a disproportionately white environment in which political power has been stripped from Latino people living in San Rafael and black people living in San Rafael and and also Asian people living in San Rafael. I mean, you haven't ever allowed any of these groups to have any reasonable foothold in terms of property ownership. And now you're talking about, you know, redistricting and and trying to define gerrymandering, but you have achieved gerrymandering. My other question is, do you have any of the, you know, internment camp, quote unquote, residents? I they're they're essentially detainees in that homeless camp you're maintaining under the freeway. Do you have any of them registered to vote? Because I believe their constitutional rights are being violated in a variety of ways. But one of the other ways is that, you know, you have a a disproportionately black and Latino group in there, and we don't.
Right now, I see no other hands raised. I'll give a couple of seconds.
Okay.
I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close public comment and bring it back. And maybe Rob will come back on. I did hear one question about how the homeless population is included in the districting, if you could speak to that.
So we 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 saw lots of stories on the news about the difficulty collecting census counts, especially around homeless in California. And and I I personally believe that there are a lot were a lot of homeless that were not necessarily counted in in the process if they didn't necessarily avail themselves to the process. However, that does not stop them from registering to vote. And so while they're while they may not be represented in the count, they can be represented in the vote. And and we we can't fix the flaws in the census process in the in in the redrawing process and the actual numbers that are given to us that we're required to use by the federal courts. But certainly, an active campaign to go out and collect voter registrations for all communities before every election is is crucial for the, you know, greater democracy. I I can't I can't speak to many of the points brought up, but but I definitely understand the frustration.
Yeah. No, thank you. And I I do agree that getting people to register to vote is a key issue. And I know that there's been there's been campaigns around that in the past, and hopefully that will continue going forward because I a hundred percent agree with that. So additional comments. And again, you know, Robert, I did want to speak to the fact that we didn't get a lot of public comment, but you've been very clear how people can comment online through the maps. I actually did go to the site today and clicked around and making it really easy. And I want to say, in addition, if if anyone runs into trouble, I think there's a phone number on there. You can get walked through. The city staff will provide support. We really do want to hear input either through a map or even if it's a straight narrative, this is what I think is a community of interest. I know you will receive however you want information. They can write it on napkin and give it to you, and I know you're going to take it into consideration. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick comment to really encourage all residents of San Rafael to look at this issue. The we, this is only our second time around. We we had our our first go just recently. And I think we are absolutely open to refining and maybe even completely revising significantly our approach from last time. So definitely encourage everyone to pick their method of communicating with us, bring forward communities of interest that you think should be represented. And we will evaluate them and possibly make significant changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Micah, please.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. It was super helpful. My question is, are we partnering with the CBOs, you know, the community-based organizations in the canal, just to make sure that our Latino neighbors are involved in the process? And I've been going around the website, and it's great to be able to, you know, access in Spanish. But yeah, thank you.
Yes, could you, yeah, Rob, do you have any insight on that question?
I I I think the outreach has been done by staff, so I would have to defer to staff on what the outreach has looked like.
Thank you. Chris.
That's true, but I do know that staff has been in in close contact with the Canal Alliance and a number of other community-based organizations about this very process. So I I know they are doing that outreach.
Great, that's that's what I thought, so thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, do you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, Councilmember Hill? No? Okay, well, I will just conclude by saying, Vice Mayor Bushy and myself, we're part of the the districting the first time we went through. And when you look at our maps, we had a lot of public input, and it was great. So yes, Vice Mayor said we could throw it all the way out, but I think we were very, very deliberate. That's why District one has a spine that goes up Lincoln. We took it very seriously to have communities of interest together. And I'm heartened by the fact that we're still under the ten percent percentage. We try, I would hope so, because that means we just we just finished this three years ago. So unless there's anything else, Rob, that you need from us, I think we will, let me see, what are we doing today? We are accepting a report on this item.
It's not unusual for people to get much more vocal after the first set of maps are published.
I wish you'd react to something.
Exactly right.
Exactly. And actually, to that point, in the maps, this is kind of a silly question, but will the current map be one of the maps that's on the website?
It it is currently on the website.
Yeah.
So people can react to that as too. Okay, thank you. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't think so. I think most other, there are more questions or comments, I think that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. And the Vice Mayor, I think, was in the process of making a motion.
Yes, I was. I move that we accept the report and close the public hearing. I guess we did put close the public hearing. Is that?
I think it's accept the report update on final adjusted.
Oh, there we go. I found it, sorry. I I move that we accept the report on the update on final adjusted demographics of existing districts, first public hearing on existing lines and possible changes.
There's seconded, okay, there's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yvonne Salati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Again, thanks to Rob and Chris, who we will see several more times before the process is over. And again, community, let's hear from you on this going forward. Okay, the next item is item seven B. I see Jacob has joined us. This is an accessory dwelling unit regulations. And Director Judasee, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and city council members. You have met Jacob Noonan's, our housing manager. I also tonight want to would like to introduce Leslie Mendez, who has Jacob and Leslie have partnered together to respond to the ordinance regulating ADUs. As you recall, on October eighteenth, your city council adopted a moratorium prohibiting ADUs within certain streets that allowed us some time to kind of dig deep and find out what our abilities are in terms of regulating ADUs on these streets. And this tonight's report will serve as a an update. We are required to provide you with an update within forty five days. In that timeframe, Jacob and Leslie have been coordinating with the fire department and the city attorney's office. And so they will tag team this presentation tonight. I also wanted to mention, take this time to introduce Alexis Capitanian, who has joined us as a housing analyst. She has provided some of the data related to ADUs and the maps and charts that we'll be sharing tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Jacob. Jacob?
Thank you so much, Director Judasee. And I know that Leslie is having a little trouble turning on her video, so she will be joining us in a moment. But I will be starting the presentation, and she will be picking up after. So she does have a little bit of time to come on video. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Of course, my name is Jacob Noonan. I am the city's housing programs manager. And Leslie Mendez, who has now been able to join us, who's the city's planning manager, are going to provide you with a presentation of a proposed ordinance, as the director mentioned, that amends this municipal code and the city's regulations for accessory dwelling units. Um, I'm going to provide, see if I can share my screen here for a brief presentation. And we should be sharing that now.
Great. We can see it.
Excellent. Okay, so um just to get things kicked off and so that to make sure that everybody in the audience is with us together. Uh, I'm going to begin the presentation with a few uh simple definitions. Then we'll review the Planning Commission's uh review of the regulations. I'll cover the urgency ordinance uh that the council passed. And then uh Leslie will take it from there and provide a summary of the ordinance amending the regulations. So that being said, just to kick this off, uh an accessory dwelling unit or ADU is uh is an attached or detached dwelling unit on a lot with a proposed or existing dwelling, primary dwelling unit. The ADU must include complete independent living facilities, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. ADUs are considered a residential use consistent with the general plan and zoning and does not exceed the allowable residential density for the lot. ADUs include manufactured homes. Now, junior accessory dwelling unit or JADU, these are also considered an ADU that is subject to the following requirements. They're limited to five hundred square feet in size and they must be located entirely within the primary dwelling unit. A JADU may be rented but cannot be sold separately. The owner must reside in either the primary dwelling unit or the JADU. And a deed restriction is recorded and runs on the land describing the size and attributes of the JADU and prohibiting the separate sale. Now, the final two definitions that I wanted to cover this evening, uh one of which is the San Rafael Municipal Code or SMRC. This refers to the city's codes and regulations and includes Title fourteen, essentially a chapter that contains the city's codes and regulations for zoning and uses of land. The ordinance before the City Council this evening would amend the SMRC to replace section fourteen sixteen two eight five of Title fourteen with new regulations for JADUs and ADUs. Lastly, the city, the Cal- the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, is the State Department tasked with reviewing local ADU regulations. Once the City Council adopts an ordinance, the ordinance must be sent to HCD within sixty days. HCD will then review the ordinance and notify the city of any inconsistencies with state law. Now, a review of where uh the state legislature has been in recent years shows you that uh there has been uh a lot of focus on ADUs and JADUs with several bills modifying state laws. Uh, the changes that have been adopted by the legislature have been focused on reducing barriers, streamlining the approval process, and expanding production throughout California. Now, on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, the Planning Commission held a duly notice public hearing. They received all public comment and unanimously recommended the City Council adopt an ordinance establishing new JADU and ADU regulations for the city. And the ordinance provided as attachment one to this evening's staff report includes those regulations that were recommended by the Planning Commission, except as follows. The ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance does not include the prohibition of JADUs and ADUs on properties solely accessed from certain streets in the hillside areas, which was the focus of the urgency ordinance. Additionally, the ordinance does not include the discretionary process that had been proposed by staff for applications that deviated from the standards in the regulations. And this is because on further review, staff uh believes that there is sufficient latitude in the proposed regulations and state law to allow for review of ADUs and so that that process was unnecessary. Lastly, this is in compliance with the most recent state bill affecting ADUs, which is this year's AB three forty-five. Staff has included a provision allowing an ADU to be sold separately from the primary dwelling when the seller is a government agency, land trust, or housing organization. So following the Planning Commission's recommendation and prior to finalizing the draft ordinance, staff continued to study the fire safety access concerns on the identified hillside streets and the proposed prohibition of JADUs and ADUs on the list of prohibited streets that have been provided with that urgency ordinance. Staff also reviewed the allowances and state law provided to local jurisdictions to prohibit uh JADUs and ADUs for public health and safety reasons. And the City Council adopted the interim ordinance on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, after staff determined further analysis was required to determine whether the proposed prohibition of ADUs, JADUs on narrow hilly streets or other regulations would be consistent with state housing laws. So since enacting the urgency ordinance, staff has continued the process of studying the issues related to fire safety access in hillside areas and the allowances provided in state law for local jurisdictions to enact prohibitions against JADUs and ADUs. Staff met internally two times to discuss the Fire Department's concerns, reviewed the regulations in other local communities, and evaluated how the city's recently adopted parking box program may alleviate the concerns for fire vehicle access in hillside areas. Additionally, on October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, staff met and discussed the access concerns and allowances under state law with representatives from HCD who inquired about which solutions the city had sought to ameliorate the condition of parking in the identified streets. So the prohibition reviewed by the Planning Commission had been originally proposed by staff to ensure adequate fire truck access during emergencies on narrow streets in the hillside, where on-street parking has a tendency to constrict vehicle access. However, the Fire Department has confirmed that this on-street parking problem has been addressed by the city's adoption of its parking box program, which eliminates on-street parking in hillside areas where hillside widths are not wide enough to safely allow trucks to pass by parked vehicles. The parking box program is currently being implemented and with proper enforcement should ensure proper access. Additionally, except in limited circumstances under the ordinance, an ADU proposed outside of one-half mile walking distance to public transit must provide a parking space on the property. And staff feels that this uh is could prevent, would prevent additional demand for on-street parking. Now, currently, the city's ADU regulations do not comply with state law and are therefore considered null and void. The ordinance before the City Council on consideration this evening would establish local JADU and ADU regulations consistent with the changes in state law. And at this point, Leslie Mendez, again, the city's Planning Manager, will now summarize those regulations. Over to you, Leslie.
Yes, thanks, Jacob. Um, good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Um, I am Leslie Mendez, the Planning Manager for the city. Excited to be here tonight in front of you. I'm going to now turn to the key elements of the ADU ordinance, as Jacob mentioned, which is section fourteen sixteen two eight five of the San Rafael Municipal Code. Uh, slide.
You bet.
So first, please know that in addition to the proposed ADU regulations in the zoning ordinance, there are minor changes to Title Four and twelve, the Municipal Code, updating the text from secondary dwelling unit to accessory dwelling unit. In addition, Title One would be amended to provide for state mandated delayed code enforcement action to allow ADUs become compliant with building standards. Slide, please. As per state law, ADUs are allowed in all zoning districts that allow dwelling units. Single-family lots are permitted to have both one ADU, either internal within the existing dwelling unit, attached as a new addition, or detached as a separate accessory structure, as well as one JADU, which by definition is internal. Slide, please. In addition, ADUs are also permissible on multi-family lots. Multi-family structures may either choose to have internal or detached ADUs. Internal ADUs must be converted from non-habitable space, such as the storage or laundry room. And the number of permissible ADUs is up to twenty-five percent of the number of dwelling units on the parcel, but a minimum of one, at least one, they're allowed to have. Alternatively, a multi-family parcel may choose to construct up to two detached ADUs with a sixteen-foot height limit. ADUs on multi-family lots may not be rented for less than thirty days, meaning there are no short short-term rentals allowed on these ADUs. Slide, please. The city's ADU ordinance also includes state requirements on tenure and sale. Owner occupancy is not required for units permitted between January first of two thousand twenty and January first of two thousand twenty-five. And while in general, ADUs are not allowed to be sold separate from primary dwelling units, in essence, to be condos, as Jacob mentioned, this prohibition does not apply if the owner of an ADU is a government agency, a land trust, or a housing organization. Slide, please. The next few slides summarize the proposed development standards for ADUs, which were included in your packet tonight. Minimum floor areas for all ADUs is a hundred and fifty square feet with a maximum of a thousand square feet for attached and detached ADUs. No maximum size for an internal conversion and a five hundred square foot maximum for JADUs. J and ADUs are not subject to lot coverage limits. Next slide, please. As for setbacks, there are none for ADUs created through an internal conversion, including JADUs. Attached and detached ADUs, however, are required to have a four-foot side and rear setback and have the same front yard setback as the primary dwelling unit. Slide, please. For new construction, which is an attached or detached ADU, the height limit is sixteen feet with an exception for the Eichler Alliance District where the height is limited to seventeen feet or the height of the existing residence, whichever is less. Separate entrances are required for all J and ADUs with the exception of and with the exception of JADUs. No interior access to the primary dwelling unit is permitted. Slide, please. And finally, onto parking. One parking space is required per newly constructed attached or detached ADU with the following exceptions as required by state law. No parking is required if the ADU is located within one-half mile walking distance of public transit. If it's located within an historic district, it is it's part of a proposed or existing primary residence or existing accessory structure, meaning an internal conversion. If on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the ADU or when there is a car-share vehicle located within one block. In addition, parking is not required when a gar- garage or carport or cover parking structure is demolished in conjunction with the construction of the ADU or converted to an ADU. And in addition, that parking that has been taken away does not need to be replaced. Uh, next slide. And finally, with that brief summary, staff does recommend that the council pass the print B ordinance um allowing for the new ADU ordinance. And as it was quite brief, uh, we are here to answer any questions you may have regarding the proposal before you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Director Judasee. So maybe if you stop screen sharing, you guys are all really little otherwise. And if we need additional slides, we'll have you pull them back up. So I.
There you go, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I will uh call on my councilmembers for uh questions and then um after that, we will open up to the public for comments. So I'll start with Vice Mayor Bushy.
Thank you. Um, great presentation, um great issue. Um, uh, ADUs and JADUs are have been a um a a very important component um of our uh housing plans for a long time. Um, I want to, my question is about the the bigger picture here. Um, I know we've got a lot of um attention on the on the narrow streets and uh hillside. Um, help me understand how we got into a position where we needed to update on our our ordinance. Why? Why were? Why are we out of compliance in the first place um in the in the big picture? Um, and why? Why did we need this new set? Was it just some new state law or what what happened?
I can, I can provide that information. Um, just because we've gone our um ordinance um currently exists as a second unit ordinance and we tried to update um as regulations were being adopted at the state level. We started updating our own regulations to address the state legislation. And as we were getting ready to bring those forward, the state changed things again. And so it delayed um the the time, you know, if there was a delay in the time from when we initially started the update to when you're finally seeing it now. Um, so we we never did adopt the changes um that were made at the state level, um which was fine because the state was basically said, you know, if you haven't adopted an ordinance, here are the regulations that will apply. Um, but we're now feeling like we need to have some sort of certainty for our own sake. Um, our planners need to be able to um read our own regulations um and also provide information to the public on what they can and cannot do in an easy format. And so that's what you're seeing here tonight is just trying to find a solution for us relaying information, but also to process applications easily. And um and then we, this kind of moved a little quicker because we started to see um applications that were proposed on hillside lots, which is we, which is how the uh urgency ordinance came to you on the eighteenth. We really wanted to make sure that whatever we brought before you was something that was that we felt we thought through and were able to produce something that you uh your city council could adopt.
Thank you. Your reference to the the uh second unit um takes me back in time. I think I I may have been a part of that.
Oh, you were.
You were. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Micah, do you have any additional questions?
Uh, no, I think uh it was a great presentation. I guess my only one is um I see that in one location you can have your JADU and your ADU. Um, do you have to live in what? You mentioned for the JADU, uh, you had to either live on the main dwelling or in the JADU. So if you have a JADU, ADU, and the main dwelling, um, do you have to live there and can you live on the ADU? Does it make sense? A lot of ADUs.
I I believe so. Let me take a stab at this. So in a case where you had a primary dwelling with a JADU and an A- ADU, you would need to be, uh, the owner would need to be present on the property, either in the primary dwelling or in the JADU.
Okay, so you couldn't be on the ADU.
You know, I I imagine that that could be possible. Um, you know, I I think that the the real emphasis here is if you have the JADU at the property, that the owner needs to reside on the property.
That makes sense. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, thank you for the update in the detail. After reviewing it a couple of times, it definitely is making more sense. So I appreciate that. Um, I I after living in San Francisco for so many years and not having any parking and the whole issue around permit parking and controlling that, are there any controls for outside of ADUs and JADUs, controls around how many residents in a car? I mean, how many you can have? Just as a standalone, say you have three older adult children and two adults, you could potentially have five cars. Any limits?
We do not have any current limits on how many vehicles a property owner can have. No.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hill.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a series of questions. In my reading of the uh state legislation, there does appear to be a process in place that if we submit our ordinance, it goes through a series of reviews. If it's found non-compliant, there's a process for that. Can can staff walk us through that a a little bit? I just want to understand what um what the process looks like to have our ordinance uh accepted or denied.
I could uh kick it off and perhaps uh a city attorney might be able to um jump in if I miss anything. Um, so as I understand it, the uh So as I understand it, the city, we do need to share the ordinance with HCD within 60 days of the council's adoption. And then HCD will review our ordinance and notify us if it is, if they find it inconsistent with state law. In that case, we would then need to be, we would need to amend the ordinance. I am not certain if our ordinance, or if it would be that particular aspect of our ordinance would just simply be unenforceable. However, when we were notified by HCD, we would need to amend the law as it is. And I see that we have Nira Doherty with us, one of our city attorneys, who might have additional information for you.
Thank you, Jacob. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Nira Doherty with the City Attorney's Office. Yes, that was generally accurate. All city ordinance, ADU ordinances must be submitted to HCD for HCD's review. HCD does not actually approve ordinances. To the extent HCD finds that there are inconsistencies as between a local ordinance and state law, HCD will inform the city of those inconsistencies. And then the city has the opportunity to either amend the ordinance or adopt a statement or a position that the ordinance, that the city believes the ordinance is consistent with state law. HCD's approval doesn't actually invalidate or void the ordinance. It's just a series of findings and a determination by HCD as to whether or not there is inconsistency.
Thank you. I read further that there was a, that they would have the opportunity to make a referral to the Attorney General. At what point would it go to that level of escalation?
Yeah, we don't know because as far as I'm aware, no ordinance has been referred to the AG's office. But yes, HCD reserves the right to refer any city that refuses to amend their ordinance, if the ordinance is inconsistent with state law, to the AG's office. But that, I am almost 100% certain that that has not yet happened. The AG has not initiated any affirmative litigation or actions against a city for failure to have an ordinance that's consistent with state law. Now, that's not to say that we aren't aware of challenges brought by homeowners or applicants on the basis of the city's inconsistency with state law.
Thank you. An additional question and clarification I wanted to seek was around the term "public transit." In my reading of the definition of the, of state law is that any parcel that's within half-mile walking distance of public transit defined as, you know, it has a series of ands and ors around buses, trains, subways, et cetera. So is the city's interpretation that that means a bus route, a bus stop, or even the Samrafell Transit Center? What is our interpretation of that definition?
Yeah, so the, just reading the definition directly, the public transit for the ADU language means a location, including but not limited to a bus stop or train stop, where the public may access buses, trains, subways, or other forms of transportation that charge set fares, run on fixed routes, and are available to the public. So I believe that under that definition, you would just need to be within a half-mile walking distance of a bus stop.
Got it. In that interpretation, when I look at the 20, or sorry, 41 identified streets that we'd originally excluded for me to use back in March, there are several of those streets that fall within a half-mile walking distance of a bus stop. I used Google Maps and used the walking, the pedestrian function to make that determination. I guess my biggest concern is that as much as we would like to say that we are affording a public, or sorry, a parking standard, that eliminates that opportunity for many of the community, many parts of our community that we identified as wanting to exclude in the proposed ordinance back in March. I guess, are there any other remedies that we can seek that we could consider a parking standard? Is there a way that we can interpret walkability? I guess a lot of those streets are in the hillside that, you know, I think there's a presumption that every community member can navigate that easily, that there's sidewalks to even get there. A lot of the hillside communities don't actually have designated sidewalks. Is there any way that we can reinterpret that? Or is it pretty, pretty well-defined in the state legislation?
I'm not aware of whether we would or would not be able to further define walkability. You do bring up an interesting point, however, in that when an owner is selecting and choosing to develop a project or a property, that they certainly should take into consideration whether parking is something that they can provide on-site. And when the parking box program is in place prohibiting any on-street parking, that owner who's proposing an ADU should certainly, I would hope, would take that into consideration if they cannot, you know, if they're going to have to park or walk a long distance. I'm not sure if Director Judasey is aware of anything in law around parking and defining, or walking and defining that.
Before you add to that, I think it is time for our interpreter to switch out. We are so grateful to Paloma and Marina, and we want to.
Estamos muy agradecidos y queremos.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So sorry to interrupt, but we want to be careful about that. Director Judasey, did you have anything?
What I was going to add is just, you know, when we ask applicants to provide all their information, including your site plan and, you know, proof that they can comply with our development standards for ADUs, that one of the questions will be, show us that you are within a certain distance, you know, the half-mile distance of, walking distance of transit. So that's something that we would ask the applicants to submit proof of. I don't know if there's a way to define, define the, the public transit any more narrow than we, what we're allowed by HCD. We can't define it more narrow than what we're allowed to by HCD, but I'm just, I'm not sure if there's another definition interpretation. I'm wondering if the, our city, either Nira or Rob, have any, anything that they could add in terms of what, you know, more, what additional definitions that we are able to, if we're able to address Councilmember Hill's question.
We are permitted to further limit the parking requirements so we can reduce parking beyond even what the state requires. So it would be possible to add to a parking exemption some walkability criteria, and we would define that as proximity to, or maybe we'd reference an already established walkability score metric as a means of eliminating a parking requirement.
Yeah, I'm not looking to eliminate a parking requirement. I'm looking to create, not to eliminate.
We, well, we could, yeah, so we couldn't add, we could not further add parking requirements where those don't, where the state has already regulated in that area. So the state has said you cannot require any more than one space per ADU, off-street space per ADU, and you can't even require those where there's the proximity to public transit and car-share vehicles. So if we add walkability criteria, we couldn't further, we couldn't expand the already limited parking requirements by requiring additional parking.
And Councilmember Hill, I think also we need to interpret the definition of within half-mile transit broadly to be consistent with the intent of the law and not exclude bus stops or rideshare pickups locations. I think that the intent of the law is that we, you know, anywhere that somebody's able to get public transit is considered to be public tran, with, you know, public transit. So if there, if this ADU is within a half-mile of that location, then, then it qualifies for the parking exemption.
Thank you for the, yeah, I think, yeah, I'll save my comments for when it's time for comment. I had a, I'll save for comment.
Okay. Thank you. So I just have a few questions. Thank you to my colleagues. Right, did everyone ask questions? Yes. Can't remember. Yes? Did I get to everyone? Okay. I couldn't really get everyone's moving around. So I just wanted, I think it was building on what the Vice Mayor had asked, but I wanted to be clear that we're having this conversation because the catalyst was really the recent change in state law. That's why we're having this discussion, to get us up to date, right? I just want to make, be very clear. Okay. For those that are just listening and not watching, Director Judasey is nodding her head yes to that. So it's to have us be in compliance. And I wanted to build on what Nira had said and from Councilmember Hill's question. So even though HCD is not the final decision-making body, they are an arbitrator, arbiter? They are one that oversees it. And litigation is the tool that they could ultimately use if they don't, if we're going against what state laws or we're not complying, right? That's their backstop. That's their stick, as it were. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah. We are having to comply, and HCD is essentially evaluating to make sure that we, that our ordinance is in compliance.
Right, so it'd be litigation by other state agencies towards the city of Samrafell if we are not in compliance. Okay, I just want to really understand how we got to this point. And one being that we have received lots of input from some neighbors on a very specific street in Samrafell. And I was hoping if you could maybe speak to that as an example. I'm sure we're going to receive, hear public comment from some of those neighbors, but I would love to have this kind of bigger, broader conversation and how that applies for, as an example, to the proposed, I think there's a.
Quiero decir que estamos en.
On a specific street. So maybe Director Judasey, you could speak to how this kind of broader thing ends up manifesting. I know there are concerns regarding fire access and maybe speak to what the fire department has found and why there's not, why their, the fire department knows that they can get there as needed, should the need arise.
I think the bigger question that came up was the fire department's ability to access a, you know, certain streets. And, you know, the issues that have surfaced is that there are vehicles that are being parked on the street, and therefore, the access width is reduced. And so as fire vehicles are trying to respond to an emergency, because vehicles are parked in the street, that's what makes it difficult to access. So the way the fire department has addressed it is through an adoption, through your city council's adoption of a parking box program, which identifies locations where vehicles can park and, and then reduces that conflict that the fire department is experiencing. And speaking with Fire Chief White, what we understand is that, and Chief White is coming on perfect timing, is that if we are able to enforce those parking limitations and allow parking only within those parking boxes, that the issue of access is reduced. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Chief White?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers, and thank you, Ally, and thank you, Mr. Noonan, and everyone else's work to address this very important report to the community and to everyone another this evening. I think Ally has just spoke to it correctly. We've got parking boxes, but it's really important to indicate that parking boxes are not a solution for every street with access or egress challenges. They're designed specifically for those areas where we know that fire department apparatus are able to traverse areas safely so long as those parking boxes are adhered to. And so given that, we do recognize there are other streets, as you indicated earlier, Mayor Kate, that really will not benefit from parking boxes. You cannot place a parking box in some of those areas because they're so narrow and they don't really have any access or ability for vehicles to pass one another, as an example, whether they're going in opposite direction or if there's a vehicle parked in a parking box. So this is not a one-stop solution for every road, but it does serve to create safe avenues and, as I stated, access and egress for first responders trying to get to an incident and individuals from the community who are trying to evacuate away from a particular incident.
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification. And are we adding no parking signs to those spaces for people that might be, I don't know, dropping by or visiting a friend and they don't realize all these issues for our neighborhoods? And I actually live on a street that, you just described that. And I'm thinking, we'd love to have a no parking sign on some of the sides of our street. So is that part of the parking box program? Is for us to add in that additional signage, or can it be?
I believe that's certainly something we can employ if we haven't already been utilizing no parking signage. I think there's also Chevron that can be painted in certain areas. I know there's been re-establishment or repainting of curbs, as an example, that were formerly red but may have faded. And so individuals who were once parking in areas that were really in violation for parking there, there's an effort to renew those areas now to ensure that, as an example, if someone's turning around a corner, when someone's been accustomed to parking there, they're now finding in some instances that they're no longer capable of parking there because of the fact that there is a restriction that should have been adhered to all along. And so when we look at it from that lens, certainly there's opportunities to ensure that everyone understands areas that they're prohibited from parking from. I think additionally, as was stated earlier, enforcement becomes a very important component of this because for everyone to feel like there's a safeness in their neighborhood in the event something were to happen, they want to be very mindful and very proactive about getting out and ensuring that the education is there, but the enforcement is there combined with the education so that everyone understands whether you have visitors, whether you have guests or someone else that are going to be there for, you know, a couple of days or what have you. Everyone needs to understand that safety is paramount and as a result, communicate that consistently throughout every neighborhood.
Thank you. Before I go to public comment, do my colleagues have any questions? Now that Chief White has joined us, we've drilled down a little bit on the parking. Any other questions for him before we open it up? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much. The city clerk to help us with public comment. I will open the public comment on this item. There she is.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then we'll be muted once time has elapsed. I do see one hand raised.
This is Victoria DeWitt. What about public safety? Doesn't the state allow you to prohibit ADUs where public safety is an issue? And I think Chief White touched on that. Those 41 streets named in the commission's ordinance were determined to have not only narrow travel lanes of less than 14 feet, but excessive turning radius, maneuvering difficulty, and/or lack of a turnaround. On Fremont and Upper Fremont, it's not about parking. It's about the street. The trucks cannot make it up the street. And California Fire Code, Section 503.2.4, defines the minimum turning radius for a fire truck as 26 feet on the inside and 46 feet on the outside. That's minimum. That a parking box on Fremont Road is not going to fix the turning radius problem. California Fire Code D 103.4 requires a fire truck turnaround on access roads in excess of 150 feet. A parking box isn't going to solve that problem. There's no fire truck turnaround on Fremont Road or Upper Fremont Drive. They're both one-lane, two-way, dead-end streets. The California Fire Code 503.2.1 requires an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, and the fire. 503.2.1 requires an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, and the Fire Social has listed 41 streets with less than 14 feet clearance. Have you personally visited these streets? Um, the fire incident report, which I provided a copy to you attached to my letter for 55 Upper Fremont, which occurred on January 4th, 2016, states under the contributing suppression fact-
Thank you, Victoria. In the letter she was referencing, I know that I seen it, I saw it, and I know that staff and the council has seen it too. So, um, thank you for calling in. Is there additional comment? And we will get to her question when we're done receiving public comment.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Kate and council members. My name is Susan Bradford. I've lived in San Rafael for 43 years. In general, I'm in favor of ADUs, but only when they're located in safe areas and where there is adequate parking and fire truck access. However, ADUs located on hillsides with situations like very narrow streets, inadequate room for fire truck access and turnarounds, and already difficult parking issues for the current existing residents, and being in a wildlife urban interface zone, as many hillsides are, with any of these features, I am adamantly opposed to them. This proposed ordinance will affect every person who lives in a neighborhood that has an ADU on narrow hillside streets with these challenging issues. When there's a fire, especially during our six-month-long high-fire season, the whole neighborhood will be seriously at risk of a fire spreading into a full-on neighborhood fire, especially when fire truck access is limited, blocked, or inadequate. My neighborhood already experienced this a number of years ago when fire trucks were not able to reach a burning house. It's dangerous to put more people and property in these kind of areas. Regarding parking, every narrow hillside already has significant issues with parking, and 99% of ADU renters have cars, and they need to be treated like first-class citizens, not second-class citizens who can't have cars or can't park close to where they live. I want to know, will you use the CEQA risk assessment done on every ADU that's on the hillside? Because this is a requirement. So as a resident who lives in exactly this situation, I need to feel assured that the city will-
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give them a couple of moments. I see a hand.
Hi, this is Victoria DeWitt again. Please let me speak. I couldn't finish. Two minutes is not enough. On that fire incident report-
I'm, I apologize. And so we have two minutes, uh, per person, um, and we've received your letters and your emails, and I can assure you that we've read them and I know you've spent time with staff. So thank you.
I see no other hands raised for those who have not invited public comments already. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. Um, Victoria had asked about the nexus or the intersection of public safety and ADU. I think that's probably a New York answer as well as a Chief White answer because that's really how has the ordinance or how has the law been written, um, is, is one. And really for non-conforming streets, I, I really, and I think San Rafael, Marin County is filled with non-conforming streets. So if we can speak to that. And then CEQA, um, those are the two questions I wrote. So Director Judas, you want, I mean, you guys have, you let us, yeah. Wait, Chief White raises his hand. We'll start with him.
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Witt brought up a very important point. Uh, she asked a question as to whether or not I had visited Fremont and Upper Fremont Road, and I have on a couple of occasions, actually. Um, early on, when I first learned about some of the challenging areas in the community, I wanted to see them firsthand myself. That was certainly one of the areas that I visited. Uh, and then again, more recently, just maybe about three, four weeks ago, I went and drove the area again off of Mark Card and off of Upper Fremont and Fremont Road, just to get a sense of whether or not parking boxes would be effective on that road. And to my recollection, I didn't think they would be, and I was correct. Um, the roads are so narrow there that you're not able to, um, get past a certain point with our larger apparatus. You'd have a very tough time just driving anything larger than a utility vehicle, uh, to the very, very top of that road. And so, given that, I, I just want to state that, um, in speaking with our battalion chiefs, they indicated that, um, due to some challenges they had several years ago with the fire there, they now train our company officers on taking alternate routes to Espalda Court off of Gloria Drive and some of the adjoining area to ensure that if there is any, um, difficulty or there's an emergency developing there, we're approaching it not only just from the Upper Fremont and Fremont direction, but also from an adjoining direction to be able to put resources in play, um, coming from an area where we know there's only one way in and one way out. So I just wanted to provide that assurance that we are looking at this and from a response standpoint, devising alternate plans to be able to come in and hopefully effectively, uh, mitigate the incident, knowing full well, our units can only get so far with the actual apparatus. Our personnel will have to traverse, uh, and carry hose and equipment and, um, pump a certain distance to ensure we have water. So with that, we do have the recognition of the challenges there, and we, we certainly empathize and understand the community's concerns. Um, but I have to state also that this reality of this situation will exist, whether an individual has renters in a JADU in their unit or whether or not there's an ADU that's built, uh, onto the property somewhere. This, this doesn't change because the number of occupants within a location, um, just by virtue of itself, creates the situation that they're concerned about. And so to that, I recommend, if there's ever any reason for an evacuation, if there's an evacuation warning that's issued, as an example, leave on the warning. Don't wait until it gets to an evacuation order. Leaving on the warning makes more sense so that people get out, get out in a timely manner, feel safe, and do so in an organized way that hopefully will allow fire department personnel un- unimpeded access to the emergency location or site that we're trying to, to get in and provide, um, our resources. So I, I just wanted to share that first and foremost. I do not personally have the answer to the CEQA question, so I'm going to have to defer to Ally or Mr. Noonan or someone else from the, the city council, legal council, that is, sorry.
Thank you, Chief White. Um, I, what I was going to suggest actually is to have, um, Nira provide a response to, uh, the reasons we, you know, where we find ourselves with the recommendation that we have tonight, um, excluding the prohibition areas. Um, and then, um, just in terms of the CEQA question, ADUs per state law, we are required to process them ministerially. So they are subject to, um, the CEQA requirements that some of the, um, some other projects, maybe some discretionary projects might be. Um, Nira, do you want to go over the, um, where we have, uh, concluded in terms of the prohibited streets and our ability to regulate those?
Great. Before Nira does it, I see the city clerk has joined us.
Yes, Mayor Kate, at, at the beginning, when we opened public comment, we let our community know that if they experienced technical difficulties to reach out to us, and there was someone trying to provide public comments. Um, is it okay if we go ahead and take 13 minutes?
Yeah, yes. I will go ahead and open the public comment.
If I can request the public comment timer. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, Vice Mayor Bushy, City Council. This is Joanne Webster. I'm president and CEO of the Centerfold Chamber of Commerce. I'm so sorry about those technical difficulties. Thank you. Um, and I can hear tonight that there are definitely some imperfections and challenges to this new state law, but I do believe that they're going to be ironed out. It appears to me tonight that what's in front of you is a pretty straightforward action. Um, you need to update your current ordinance in order to, to adhere to the state law. So we all know that the state legislation has been passing all kinds of new laws that are, you know, in, uh, passing them to increase the production of new housing, and that includes ADUs and the requiring local jurisdictions to comply. So I ask that you do not put your city in jeopardy, uh, for a lawsuit or for any penalty. Staff has done a phenomenal job at addressing their, and issues that they can, that they have the priority and the jurisdiction to do. So please accept their, their recommendation tonight and update your ordinance so that it complies with state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Any other additional, um, hands raised? Yep. There you went. No. Okay. I will close the public comment. And again, thank you, everyone, for, um, being flexible in this virtual world. So I think, uh, Director Judas, you are turning it over to Nira.
Thank you. Um, so, yes, Director Judas was, um, did accurately, um, convey that the state has reserved to cities the authority to identify locations within a jurisdiction where ADUs are prohibited, um, or permitted based on the adequacy of water services, the impact of ADUs on traffic flow, and, um, the impact of ADUs on public safety. And, um, the staff had originally proposed, um, a temporary moratorium for the purpose of studying those precise impacts to ascertain whether or not ADUs on certain hillside laws indeed, um, warrant, uh, prohibition based on public safety concerns. Um, and the conclusion that, um, Chief White had spoken to and staff had come to is that, um, we, we believe that, um, there are ways to offset the safety concerns, um, without prohibiting all ADUs. Um, I will also note that the state's reservation to cities of the right to prohibit certain ADUs, um, only, um, allows cities to prohibit ADUs that are not considered, um, uh, stand, uh, no local standard ADUs. There's a category of ADUs that we call subdivision E-ADUs. HCD also refers to them as subdivision E-ADUs. That's a group of ADUs, um, that the state has said, under no circumstances may local jurisdictions impose any standards or prohibit ADUs that fall under these categories. Those categories include one 800-square-foot or less detached ADU, one internal conversion ADU, one JADU. Those are the 500-square-feet or less ADUs, and then, um, ADUs within multifamily, um, dwelling structures. And part of what we had, um, gone back and forth on is that's a pretty big majority of the ADUs that the city might see and has seen applications coming in for. And so even, um, with the reservation of the right to prohibit certain ADUs, um, we believe the correct reading of the state ADU laws and HCD, um, a- agrees with us on this, um, is that we cannot prohibit those categories of ADUs, even if there's public safety concerns, even if there's traffic concerns, and even if there's inadequate water supply.
Thank you. It is apparent that staff has worked very hard to, uh, look at all the different details and the different angles of this, how, how this new state law manifests i- i- in our policies. So, um, I will call on each of the council members for any final questions or comments, and I will start with the vice mayor.
Um, I, I agree that there appear to be just a very broad swath of the ADUs that we have no power to regulate, uh, that the state law really limits, um, that what we can do. Um, in the, this particular instance, looking at the hillsides, um, the, however, I'm, I'm persuaded really sort of by the nexus of the ADUs to the, the danger caused. Um, it's not the ADUs that are causing the problem. It's the narrow streets. Um, and as Chief White said, that the streets were there before and they're going to be there after, regardless of ADUs, that's not going to, to solve the, the problem that exists in those areas. So that's why I, um, am convinced that we should adopt this update to, to our, um, ADU ordinance. Um, it's, appears to be timely and, um, and required. And I, a- a- and we don't have a basis for, um, creating a, um, prohibition on ADUs in particular areas, uh, based on, on the, the analysis that we've been presented. Um, I do really like the idea of additional no parking signs because the, the parking box, um, uh, ordinance is, is really a parking prohibition ordinance in that you can only park if there's a box. Um, if there's not a box, you can't. And we should have sort of the companion to that of, um, no parking signs and, um, as much red paint as we can find a curb to put it on, um, in those areas, um, to emphasize that, uh, that the no parking prohibition and to bring that home to ADU, um, residents that they have their one onsite spot, and if they have additional vehicles, they're going to have to make, um, arrangements that may involve a walk, um, for them to, to park that, um, that second vehicle. So, um, I, um, am in favor of the, um, ordinance, um, as presented by staff, um, with the additional, um, request to our public work staff to get those no parking signs out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Mika.
Yeah, thank you. No, I, um, I don't really have any other questions, and I really appreciate all the effort that has, you know, been put towards this because I know this is a lot of work and, um, and the legality, and we want to make sure the city is not going to get sued either. And also the input for the community. Um, I know it's a challenging area, but I agree that is not, um, that, that the issue is actually with the streets, and you might suddenly have a family having a lot of different kids, and you might have more actually people living in the house than if you have an ADU. So, um, so yeah, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, thank you for the update. Um, wearing a different hat, I work closely with the community in Corder Madera and Christmas Tree Hill, as well as Kent Wedlands, and very, very similar types of concerns around the streets. And I really appreciate Chief White's perspective of my message to them is if you're concerned, you have to leave early. Um, and if they're from a warning, because it is the streets and it is the access, and the best thing people can do is to be prepared, um, and know what your plan's going to be because of the, the choices of living in that area and those streets. So, but I absolutely do understand it's a concern. Um, my feeling is the ADU discussion is a bit of a red herring. It's really about the streets, um, and not really about the ADUs. And, and I do, I thank the community who are working towards having ADUs and JDUs because it, it's providing an, an opportunity for housing that we need to have. Um, so I also do support the, the recommendation put forward by staff.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hill.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kate. Um, so I want to offer a few comments as a, as a member that identify as a hillside community member. First and foremost, I do think that the legislation affords our community and many communities around California the opportunity to relieve, um, some of our housing constraints, uh, that, that exist. We must acknowledge this. I also too do believe though, that the conditions in the hillside, um, are many factors here. Uh, evacuation and safety, uh, among them, but also on a day-to-day basis, the hillside is, where I, where I reside is at capacity. Um, there are, I think there would be a, an impact to allow for additional, um, additional housing built in the hillside without considerations. I, I do concur with staff that the knobs and dials that we have available to us are extremely limited. Um, all things being equal, I do think that, um, the streets that we cited back in March, uh, still stand. I think that was still a consideration that if we could, uh, we should. Uh, I realize that those don't exist. Um, to that end, uh, I, I do think, uh, I think, I can't recall who mentioned it, but that there is opportunity uh, for this legislation to be cleaned up. Uh, I will be, uh, seeking, uh, meetings with Senator McGuire and some of the member leaving, if one of them would sponsor a consideration for cleanup. Um, I do think that there is opportunity here to improve, uh, the flexibility. Uh, by the numbers, my belief is that, uh, we could easily apply ADUs to more than 99% of our community without any issue, and I think it would be an outstanding addition to our community, and I support that. Um, to that end, uh, I, uh, just want to make sure that, uh, everyone understands that I do support the AD, ADU, um, legislation on balance, but I do think that does not afford us, um, the level of flexibl- flexibility that I think is, uh, important to examine. that I think is important to examine in certain scenarios, that I think we could apply objective standards. So with that, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you. And I'll just add that I count, we see six staff here, and I know Alexis helped as well. So again, seven staff spent innumerable time and hours on this issue because we do recognize that it is new. And to Councilmember Hill's point, I think there hopefully will be cleanup language. And I hope what I would ask of the staff is next fall, so give it just under a year to revisit and see if anything else has come down. We are not the only community that is wrestling with this. Councilmember Kurtz spoke to that in Corder Madera with her work and seeing if there are other changes that come down from the state. But until that time, we need to conform to state law. And I do want to clarify, I know we keep talking about the hillside. I live on a non-conforming street, and I don't live in the hills. So it's not, it's something that is just in the hills. It actually has to do, I think, with old cities. We've been around for over 100-plus years. We have a lot of non-conforming streets. And so then where do you start to draw that line? So I think that is probably why the state has been very broad in their approach because they realized it could just start creeping, and then there would be a lack of this opportunity in our communities. So with that, I think I heard, or did hear, the Vice Mayor saying she'd be willing to read a motion. I think, I know the city clerk likes it when you read it in. So we will give you the moment to do that.
And I always have the staff report up, so I'm not.
Well, do you want me to turn it to one of your colleagues?
Just.
The pass to print and ordinance amending title at four sentences.
Yes. But it's in the wrong, I'm just in the wrong place. But pass to print, and I move that we pass to print and ordinance amending Title I, General Provisions, Title IV, Fire, Title XII, Building Regulations, and Title XIV, Zoning Ordinance of the San Rafael Municipal Code Related to Regulations for Accessory Dwelling Units and Report Issued Pursuant to Government Code 65858D.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon, Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you all, and we will have a follow-up conversation in next year on this item. So thank you so much. Our final agenda item is the year-end financial statements and related audit reports. Yay. Director Nadia Hayden is here. Nice to see you. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do not have a PowerPoint to present this time, but we will be presenting one for you. It just won't be me. So, good evening. Tonight, I will be sharing the fiscal year 2021 audit results. But the real star of the show here will be Amy Mayer, partner from Mason Associates, which is our auditor. Before jumping into a few highlights of the audit, I'd of course like to thank our finance team for their hard work, focus, and dedication in completing these audits, especially our principal accountant, Sean Plate, who did the heavy lifting and led these audits. And of course, other departments that worked with us. And lastly, our auditors, Mason Associates, for meeting our deadlines and for completing thorough audits of all of our funds. So just a few highlights. These are things that we had discussed back in September, September 20. So they are all in that staff report. But the city's general fund balance did increase by $7 million. This is within the range of the $67 million that I had projected and shared with you on September 20. So no material adjustments were made during the audit. The city this year was able to meet its emergency reserve policy and replenished the prior year amount that was used during last year's deficit. Although the fund balance increased by $7 million, approximately $6.1 million of that is earmarked for certain commitments. And this is written out in detail in the September 20 staff report. And then similar to last year or prior years, the single audit, which is the federal audit, is scheduled for completion in December, and I'll be bringing it back to you separately. We actually did not have a single audit last year because we didn't exceed the $750,000 threshold. And then with that, I will turn your attention to Amy from Mason Associates. Amy is a tenured partner, and she rotated into the city's audit last year. So she's here to present the auditor's perspective and results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Because my video will not, oh, there we go.
We can't see you. Oh, no, there you go.
There we go. I think I turned my camera off and trying to turn it on. There we go.
Nice to see you.
And I have a pumpkin floating by my head, so.
It's all good.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to start the slideshow now. Just so you have something besides, there we go. Okay, so now you can see the slides.
In a moment. Oh, now we can? Yep, you are good to go.
Okay, great. So as the Finance Director discussed the results, so I'm just going to go over the results of the audit themselves as opposed to the financial results, because she summarized them very well this year. And so this year, or excuse me, an audit, why is it not, my slides are not moving? There we go. So an audit is an independent verification that the city's financial statements are materially correct or fairly present the financial position of the city's funds. So we opine on the city's basic financial statements, and those include the major funds individually and the non-major funds in aggregate. So as part of your packet, you have, we have a total of seven reports that we're including in the summary or that are included in the packet for you tonight. And when we talk about the basic financial statements, that's, those are contained within the comprehensive financial report. They're kind of the main part of the, excuse me, I should say, the middle part of the financial statements. And prior to that is the introductory section, which includes the transmitter letter, and then on the back end, the statistical section. So we do not audit the introductory or the statistical section. We audit that middle part. That's called the basic financial statements. So our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. So as I mentioned, there are seven reports in the agenda packet, and I'm going to go over each of them now, but this gives you a summary of what we audit and another report we issue. So we have the city as a whole, which is, those results are in the comprehensive annual financial report. Then we also audit the Child Development Program, the Transportation Development Act program. And then, as the Finance Director said, the single audit, which is of the federal award programs, that'll start in December. The city staff has already provided what's called the SIPA, or Scheduled Expenditures of Federal Awards. So we'll start that audit in a few weeks. And then we also report on the calculation of the GAN limit, whether that calculation is correct or not. So the results of the city's audit, those can be found on page one of the comprehensive annual financial report. And we have issued an unmodified or clean opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. Our report this year does include what's called an emphasis of a matter. It's titled Change in Accounting Principles. There was a new governmental accounting standards board statement number 84, which is fiduciary activities. And that statement provides improved guidance regarding the identification of fiduciary activities. And what that statement, the impact on the city's financial statements is that that statement eliminated agency funds. The city only had one agency fund for the San Pedro Assessment District, and it changed them into custodial funds, which, from your perspective, now those funds have an income statement and a balance sheet is really what you're going to see, that effect on your financial statement. It's not a dramatic change. The financial statements also include management's discussion and analysis, which starts on page five, so it's after our audit opinion. So we do what's called limited procedures on that document. But that document is prepared by city staff, and it discusses the significant activity for the fiscal year compared to the prior year. So it's a really good summary of all that, of all the activity, and it's something you want to focus on each year to look at that, to get a good idea of the financial activities for the year. So one of the other documents that's included in the packet is the Memorandum on Internal Control. So as part of our audit, we also test the internal controls of the city to verify that day-to-day practices are in line with approved policies and recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that means that on a sample basis, we trace transactions to source documents for areas including revenue, disbursements, payroll, capital assets, and long-term debt. And then we also test the year-end balances on the balance sheets and the statements of net position. So from that work, if there are matters to report, they're included in our Memorandum on Internal Control, or MOIC as we call it. So there are three possible categories for comments when we have them. One is material weaknesses, kind of self-explanatory, they're material and they're weaknesses. And then I'm going to talk about the third one, which is other matters. And then in the middle are significant deficiencies. So they're not as, they're not material, but they're not as minor as an other matter. So you know, that in-the-middle bucket of significant deficiencies. So we have no material weaknesses to report this year. We did have two significant deficiencies. One was related to some inaccurate building permit, excuse me, building permit fees that was due to an error in the master fee schedule. But in the end, city staff determined that the correct fee had been charged to the third party, but the master fee schedule contained an error. But we're going to test that master fee schedule that was adopted by council. So, you know, first we thought it was a larger error than city staff determined that it was. They were charging the correct, the correct fee was in the system. And then the second issue did have to do with the scheduled expenditures of federal awards from fiscal 2020. The reason we're reporting on that in this year's audit is because last year's audit had already been issued and completed when we started that work and determined that there were some issues with the last year's scheduled expenditures of federal awards, where the city initially thought that the, a single audit was required for that, those federal award programs. And then upon further testing, it was determined that it was not. The city used to outsource the preparation of that document and has now since brought it in-house after a number of errors were discovered in that work. And then we also have, there are other matters to report in the Memorandum on Internal Control. And this year, the only other matters that we have to report are a number of forthcoming governmental accounting standards boards pronouncements that will be, become effective over the next few fiscal years just to kind of alert you to some other major accounting issues that are coming, or accounting changes, I should say, that are coming in the near future. So one of the other documents that we have is what's called a required communications. So there are certain communications we are required to communicate to you, which is what I'm going over tonight, but then we also issued that separate document that summarizes them for you. And some of the main points, there, we have to report to you whether there were any changes of an accounting principles. So this year, the only change in accounting principles was that implementation of governmental accounting standard, GASB. GASB statement number 34, or excuse me, 84, related to fiduciary activities. There were no unusual transactions that we noted during the fiscal year. In that document, we do call out COVID-19 because it does have that continued potential impact on the city's financial results as the things that are unknown, if there were any shelter-in-place provisions that are issued in the near future, or anything that can continue to affect revenues and, of course, expenditures as well. Another area in that document is significant accounting estimates. The financial statements, you have to remember, are that culmination of all of the activity for the fiscal year, frozen at June 30. And there are a number of estimates that are included in the financial statements at that point. And so we list those estimates in the required communications, just so you know, because there are some numbers that are an estimate of the assets or the liabilities, and the actual results could vary when the actual results come through in the subsequent fiscal years. The most significant include, of course, the net OPEB liability and the net pension liability. Those are your largest estimates in the financial statements. And others include accumulated depreciation on capital assets, fair value of investments, and so on. But again, the pension and the OPEB are your largest estimates. We're pleased to report we had no disagreements with management, and there were no, and we're also pleased to report there were no material audit adjustments, and we have no uncorrected statements to report. So required to accumulate any, you know, any little errors we find along the way. And if they, if they become significant, we're required to report them. And we have no, no significant uncorrected statements to report. We deem them trivial. One of the other reports that is included in your packet, and notice that it says draft. So the, one of the other audits that we complete is the childcare audit, the audit of your childcare program, which is funded through some state and federal grants. And the, it's only, it can only be a draft as of tonight because the report can't be issued until the state issues what's called its closeout letter. And the state is behind, like most other government agencies, you know, behind in producing those reports due to the impacts of the pandemic, you know, on staffing and things like that. So in, you know, last year's closeout letter didn't get issued until May of '21. So we don't know when the fiscal '21 closeout letter will be received. But our audit team has completed all the audit work up until that closeout letter. And what that closeout letter tells you is whether or not there's a final calculation as to whether any funding, if there's excess or a shortage of funding that's owed to the state or vice versa. Excuse me. But based on that, the initial audit work, we have, we're proposed to issue an unmodified or clean opinion on that audit as well. And we had no compliance findings in the current, during, for the current year work on the childcare audit. Again, we have to always give the caveat, it's a draft, so as of now, there are no findings. Then we also performed an audit of the Transportation Development Act program again this year. And so these are the grants that you receive through Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the Bike Path and the other related grants. And we also issued an unmodified or clean opinion on that audit report and had no compliance findings related to that work as well. And with that, unavailable for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, as well as all the audit work you have done. Now I can see everyone. Questions? Vice Mayor Bushy.
No, just appreciation. Love those clean, those clean reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, any questions?
No questions, but I will just say that because the standard has been set so high by our Finance Director, who's on our call right now, you know, it's unfortunate because now that's the bar now. So thank you for confirming that. Thank you.
Never a bad bar to set.
We're okay with that problem.
And I do want to, you know, I always forget, I get you, in your own presentation, I do want to thank the Finance Director, Nadine and her team, because they're all very cooperative and very forthcoming in providing information during the audit because we ask for a lot of information.
Thank you. No, I think that's important for the public to know that. Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Scalati, any questions?
No questions. So appreciations. And I know your job is to look for things that they haven't been done properly, and it's just wonderful to see the reports that they are clean. And I really appreciate the staff because I know how, how much work is you have to put into that. So I really appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I really appreciate Nadine and everyone on the staff. Huge, it does, it takes so much time and so much work while you're still doing the day-to-day. So thank you, and it's great to have a clean audit. I did have a question around, with all the COVID changes, did the audit process change at all in terms of what you were doing or looking at?
Definitely. The audit is primarily a remote audit, which was, you know, that, last year was more of necessity. But now that we've got a process in place, and a lot of records are electronic these days, it's become a lot easier to find efficient ways to do it. But definitely, that's, that's the biggest change, is doing the remote audit and then going onsite when we need to, you know. Of course, there are some areas that have to be, you know, get to see or interview someone. But even that, with some of the interviews, we can do a lot with teams or Zoom meetings and things like that. Yes.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions myself, so I will ask the city clerk, see if the public would like to comment on this item. I shall open it up.
Comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in via telephone, please press star nine. I see no hands raised. I'll give her a couple seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And it seemed to me that the council members all gave comments instead of questions. So unless there's additional items, I will just add my praise and my thanks, both to Amy and her team for going through, and of course, to Director Atiya Hayden and her team. And to remind our public that, yes, there's a lot of numbers in that document, but there's that very readable page. I don't remember, Amy, you referred to it, but that's a great.
Page five.
Page five. And I think that's really helpful. I know when I first got on the council years ago, that page wasn't as readable as it is now, and it actually really makes it a lot more accessible. And I know that Nadine works hard to have that information make sense to our community. So I just wanted to highlight that for people that don't want to, I don't know how many pages, there are a lot of pages in that document, but go to page five. So with that, I don't see any other additional comments. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
For, to accept the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Annual Financial Report, GAN Appropriations Limit Memorandum on Internal Control, Report of Required Communications, Child Development Program Financial Report and the Transportation Development Act Financial Report.
Good.
You? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Hill. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon, Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thanks again, Amy. Thank you, Nadine. So we come to the end of our agenda, which I always want to stretch out to see who's staff is here to turn on their cameras so we can thank everyone for all the work that you've done. And we're headed into that celebration season. So however your family celebrates, whatever holidays you have coming up, enjoy that time in the fall days, and we will adjourn this meeting and see you in December. So, meeting adjourned. Take care.